I'd like to call the April 4th Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And our first order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless us with wisdom, guidance, and your leadership as the board deliberates the items on tonight's agenda. Bless our telecommunicators, who we honor here this evening for their dedication to our citizens during their most critical times of need. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to have our deputy county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell, do lead us in the pledge.
...........................................................................
I'd like to welcome our elected official Sheriff Hans Miller here tonight. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here and your staff for being here for security. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting. We have a lot of young people in the audience tonight, and good to see the current Board of Commissioners and the future Board of Commissioners sitting right out here. Thank you for coming. We ask all that's in attendance to please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda item for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue in which the Board of Commissioners has control of. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they come to sign up at the speak at the all address, all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the items on the adoption of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does any Commissioner want to have anything on the consent agenda removed and placed at the end of the meeting? We'll move on. Mr. Cotton, are we at the three, the public comment section?
No one has signed up for the first public comment period.
Okay. Item four, presentations. Will you cover a, aye, and the public safety, Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will read the first proclamation into the record and then invite those to receive it to the microphone in front of the flags. The first proclamation this evening is Child Abuse Awareness Month. It reads, "State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month 2018. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being one of our most vulnerable assets; and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development; and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of our community; and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources, they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential; and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families in strengthening the community in which we live, and call upon all citizens to recognize the courage it takes to raise a child and reaffirm the fundamental human rights of all children to live free from violence and abuse presented this fourth day of April 2018." I will now ask Ms. Tondra Leach, Pierce Family Development and Consolidated Human Services Staff, to accept the proclamation. The chairman has requested that Commissioner Buchanan present the proclamation.
This is one of those proclamations that is dear to my heart. There's four of us that sit on the Commission that are law enforcement. We've worked these cases over the past years. I'm retired from it. The other three members up here on the Board have all been law enforcement. Jeff, Jack is a deputy chief. Robin Knapp was NCIS. We've worked these cases from the ground level up. We've put a lot of people away in jail for this type of a situation. You know, I get a little bit emotional because children are our future. All of you young people here might be in our seats later on in life, and you mean a lot to us, the young people. And child abuse and sexual abuse and assault on children is just not tolerated. And I know that our sheriff's in the back. He's been an investigator himself with the SBI. There's a lot of us that really cherish our children, and we're going to do everything we can from our side of the House, the Commissioners, to protect our children. And our DSS people do such a good job. I mean, they've been, I've been with them now going on 14 years, and I can tell you they do the best that they can with the information that they have and the resources that they have to take care of, looking out for our children. So I want to thank you guys.
Thank you so much.[514.16][514.16](APPLAUSE). I would like to thank everyone on behalf of Pierce Family Development Center. I appreciate everything that our county Commissioners does to support Pierce and the children of our community. Thank you.[531.66][531.66](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the next proclamation is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week 2018. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Onslow County Communications Center; and whereas the skilled public safety telecommunicator is the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas telecommunicators of the Onslow County Emergency Services Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients; and whereas emergencies can strike at any time, we rely on the vigilance and preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 8, 2018, through April 14, 2018, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Onslow County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe, presented this fourth day of April 2018. The chairman has requested that Mr. Norman Bryson, Emergency Services Director, and telecommunication staff, to accept the proclamation. The chairman requests that Commissioner Price present the proclamation.
The times you call 911, you're probably not at your best, I would dare say. Even if you're excited about the birth of a child, you're still anxious. You're apprehensive. And it requires a particular type of person that can calm somebody down and get the information needed and have the skill set to kind of calm, get that person calm, and be able to get the necessary information to get emergency responders to arrive there at the correct address with the information that they need to do their jobs. And so we'd just like to say we appreciate all our telecommunicators and the jobs they do for the citizens of Onslow County, and thank you, Mr. Bryson, and Mrs. Allenz.
Thanks, sir.[716.56][716.56](APPLAUSE).
We would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing our telecommunicators in all they do. And just like Commissioner Price just said, I've often said to my people, nobody calls 911 when they're having a really good day. In Onslow County, 99% of all emergency response starts in our 911 center. Last year, we received 203,000 phone calls into our 911 center and had another 130,000 dispatches for emergency response called by them. In just a few minutes, we're going to recognize our telecommunicators, and I would like to take that opportunity to let people know if you want to be a part of this team in recognition next year. We do have some available positions open right now that's advertised online, and we're always looking for good people to be a part of that. Again, I'd like to appreciate our Commissioners, and I'd like to thank all of our telecommunicators for what they do. Thank you.[775.68][775.68](APPLAUSE).
That was well played, Norman. Well played.
So at this time, I will call on Mr. Norman Bryson and Mr. Ray Allenz to come forward and read the names of our honorees.
Thank you, sir. First, we're going to acknowledge the folks, the telecommunicators that had had saves within the past 12 months. Thomas Bogay.[806.01][806.01](APPLAUSE). Norman Carter had four.[816.01][816.01](APPLAUSE). Janet Freshire had two.[825.81][825.81](APPLAUSE). Scott Gabler had one.[836.23][836.23](APPLAUSE). Marcia Mason had four.[860.01][860.01](APPLAUSE). Kelly Mylum had one.[868.23][868.23](APPLAUSE). Darlene Sanderson had four.[876.31][876.31](APPLAUSE). Michelle Simpson had one.[884.01][884.01](APPLAUSE). And Leslie Summerall had one.[908.23][908.23](APPLAUSE). Now, we're going to recognize the two telecommunicators that actually gave childbirth instructions to deliver a baby. Michael Adams, a baby boy.[923.11][923.11](APPLAUSE). And Marcia Mason, a baby girl.[938.01][938.01](APPLAUSE). That's it. Thank you.[946.01][946.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for the presentation, and congratulations to all of you that helped with the EMS and that very important task. And my hat's off to all of you. Now, we'll move on to public hearings. We have rezoning. Mr. Cotton, will you, I'll turn that over to you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First, I will ask Mr. Ben Warren, Assistant County Manager, to give a brief staff introduction.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a petition to rezone property from Rural Agricultural, RA, to Residential 5, R5. The property owner is Beaver Creek Investors Incorporated, and the parcel identification number is 766-26, with a total acreage of a little more than 19 acres. This property does have water service from Anwassa. There's an eight-inch water line that runs adjacent to the property, and there's Pluris Sewer that's also available to the site. Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department provides fire service, and they have an ISO rating of six. And the streets providing access are Old Folkestone Road and NC Highway 210. And the average annual daily traffic count for Old Folkestone Road is approximately 5,700 vehicles per day with a capacity of 12,000 vehicle trips per day. And NC Highway 210 is 12,000 vehicle trips per day with a capacity of 30,000 vehicle trips per day. As you look at the property itself, a little bit difficult to see, but it's highlighted in red in the center of the map. But one thing to note is, as you go to the right-hand side of the screen, you can see along Highway 210 and Old Folkestone Road, the blue area is highway business. And so you have a commercial corridor and a commercial node at that intersection. And generally, what you see is transitioning from those areas, you'll have a high-density residential kind of transitioning to a medium-density and then low-density residential. And so the R5 is our highest-density residential district. And so what you see here, just to the left of the rezoning site, we already have the trend of the high-density residential appearing close to the commercial. So this will be a continuation of that trend at an area that's generally appropriate for that type of zoning. The site itself is currently wooded. Most of the adjoining property, a little bit of single-family and some additional commercial in the area, but primarily vacant property. In comparing the two zoning districts, the current RA zoning district has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet with a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. And one thing about residential agricultural, it's a little bit misleading by the name. You would think it's one of our more rural zoning districts, and by size, or minimum lot size, it generally is. But the zoning district itself allows a lot of non-residential uses. Here, you can see just a general overview of the type of uses that are allowed, but there's about 75 different uses that are currently allowed in the RA zoning district. As compared to the R5 zoning district, a smaller minimum lot size going down to 5,000 square feet and an increased maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre, and it's primarily designed for single-family and multifamily residential. Looking at the comprehensive plan, just like we talked about as we were looking at the zoning map, you have that green area, your commercial, transitioning to high-density residential, and then out to medium-density residential. And the rezoning site itself falls right into high-density residential zoning district. So the comprehensive plan certainly recommends a transition of this area from a rural agricultural zoning to a high-density residential. And because of that, and the existence of high-density residential already in the area, we would say that it is reasonable and in the public interest. Based upon those issues, staff and the planning board have both recommended approval of the rezoning request. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and first, we will hear from the applicant or applicant's designee requesting that they provide a general description of the project. Is there anyone here representing? John?
Good afternoon, all the Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Sunset Cove Development. We feel like this would be a more proper zone than the current zone of RA, and it joins existing RA that's zoned, and it complies with the comprehensive land use plan. I think it's an opportunity to, there's a lot of uses that were permitted in RA that really may not be as appropriate what is in the existing, I'm sorry, existing RA zone that wouldn't be as appropriate as a proposed zone that we're requesting. And currently, we're looking at, we've got some clients that are looking at putting multi-family, and I know you all are aware that Sneeze Valley is growing, and our roads certainly has the capacity, both roads do, Old Folkestone and NC 210, and this project will be served by Pluris Sewer and Anwassa Water. And I think it's a good opportunity for the county, and plus, I think it, I'll be here after the public hearing if there's any questions the Commissioners may have, but I think it would be the best and highest use for the land. And like I say, I'll be here after the public hearing if the Commissioners have any questions of me. Thank you.
No one else has signed up for this public comment, or correction, for this public hearing. I will make one call to the audience. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and decision.
Motion to adopt the statement of consistency and consider the approval of the rezoning.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will say that the planning board and the staff recommended unanimously to approve the rezoning issue. Now, call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? I just have it. Do we have another rezoning issue? Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First, again, I will call on Mr. Ben Warren to provide a staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. All right, the second rezoning is a little bit different than the first case in that this is a conditional rezoning request, and the request is to rezone property from Residential 8, R8M, to community business conditional zoning. Our property owners are Clifton and Rebecca Humphrey, and the applicant is Beaver Creek Investors Incorporated. Partial identification is 1318-32, and a total rezoning area of approximately 1.98 acres. Again, we have Anwassa water accessible to the site, but there is no sewer currently accessible to this rezoning site. Swansboro Volunteer Fire Department is your fire service provider, and the primary roads providing access to the property are Swansboro Loop Road and Belgrade-Swansboro Road. Swansboro Loop Road has a current vehicle trips per day count of 2,000 and a capacity of 12,000 vehicle trips per day. Belgrade-Swansboro Road currently has 4,700 vehicle trips per day and a capacity of 12,000 vehicle trips per day. As you can see, the majority of the area here in the rezoning, or vicinity of the rezoning site, is RA, the Rural Agricultural, with some very small area of the R8M. And again, as we talked about in the last rezoning case, the RA has about 75 uses. Majority of those are non-residential-type uses that are currently allowed in that zoning district. One thing that you will be seeing in the near future is we'll make some amendments to the zoning ordinance, is to take a lot of those non-residential-type uses out of RA and putting those in a community business, which is more appropriate business, as that's a district that's generally used to support surrounding residential areas. And that's exactly what you're seeing as part of this rezoning request. The rezoning site itself is primarily cleared lot. Just to the west of the rezoning site, you have the Swansboro Loop Convenience Site. Transitioning back to the east, you have primarily single-family residential, and then a lot of vacant area, vacant properties in the vicinity of the rezoning site. In comparing the two zoning districts, the R8M has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet and a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre, and it's primarily intended for single-family and multifamily residential and manufactured home parks. And one thing about conditional zoning is that it uses an existing zoning district that's allowed by the county zoning ordinance, but it essentially creates a custom zoning district in that they create specific conditions as part of the rezoning itself. And so generally, that will consist of maybe a scaled-down list of allowed uses and also a site plan and site-specific rezoning conditions. And so even though we're using the community business as a base zoning district, there are a number of changes that you'll see in a moment that go with the rezoning to ensure that it's more consistent with the surrounding community. It's a little bit hard to see the site plan itself, but generally, what we have, we have a proposed 9,900-square-foot, single-story building. We have two driveways with a circular driveway pattern, and the initial proposal was that this would be a gymnastics studio. We have a list of the total uses that are proposed in your packet, and basically what that is, it's a scaled-down list of all the uses that will be allowed in community business. So with that scaled-down list, the majority of the uses that would have a potential negative impact on adjacent properties have been taken out so that it would fit better with the surrounding community. And even so, the use that you have is still much less intense than the surrounding RA zoning that's already in place. The rezoning conditions that have been proposed as part of this rezoning petition would be one, that a natural buffer area or any area that's disturbed by development would be replaced with a buffer that complies with the county zoning ordinance, that any light that's on site would be oriented such that the light would stay on the property and minimize light pollution on adjacent properties, that an NC DOT driveway permit be secured, and that the maximum building size would be capped at 10,000 square feet. Also, that any outdoor storage would be screened from public view using the buffering and screening standards included in the Onslow County zoning ordinance, and that any increases in the number of access driveways, permitted uses beyond what's recommended or requested, or any building space in excess of 10,000 square feet would essentially have to come back to the Board of Commissioners for another rezoning hearing. The land use plan recommends medium-density residential for this area, and even though community business doesn't seem like it would be an appropriate rezoning category for medium-density residential, the medium-density residential recommends that certain commercial uses that are in support of the surrounding residential areas be allowed. And based upon the conditions that have been proposed as part of this rezoning, it is consistent with the recommendations in the land use plan. Also, as we look at the existing zoning and land uses in the area, because of the restricted nature of the conditional rezoning, it is considered reasonable and also in the public's interest because it does provide supporting commercial that would support the surrounding residential uses. Based upon those factors, both staff and the planning board recommend approval of the rezoning request. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and first, call on the applicant or applicant representative, Mr. Pierce.
Good afternoon again. I'm John Pierce, and on behalf of the applicant, I'd like just to make a few points. We've done, I would like to first say that the planning board, the planning staff was very considerate and very workable. We did our very best to eliminate any zone, and even another type of use that would not create a traffic problem, and that we wanted to do our very best to protect the neighborhood. And they worked real well, what I said. We did get support of the planning staff and the planning board for this project. Currently, we're proposing to put a unit, the Athleti Gymnasium, and currently, those kids that are going to, they're going all the way to Newport in the Swansboro area for this service, we're proposing to build there, and it would be a great convenience. And I really think, I don't know if you're aware of exactly what the site said, but it used to have a mobile home park on it, and currently, we're right beside the Onslow County Refuge Center. Some people call it the dump, but it's a refuge center. And I really feel like it's going to improve the neighborhood, it's going to be positive, and it's going to be a positive tax base for the county. And it's, what we're proposing is a very low traffic flow, and like I said- is a very low traffic flow, and like I say, it's a convenience. And I'm going to do something I normally don't do, but I would ask that all the folks out here that are in support of it, if you would stand, please, that are in support of this rezoning. So you see, it's a needed use. I don't normally do that, but it just happened to be here, and I thought they were all in favor of it. And I'm here, I'll be here, I'll be here to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the first person who has signed up for this public hearing is Ms. Ava Lanier.
Hello, my name is Ava Lanier, and I am six years old. Since I began training with Unity Athletics, my confidence and skills in both gymnastics and school have greatly improved. I think having Unity Athletics in Swansboro would be a great benefit to our community. Thank you for your time.
The next person to sign up is Ms. Emma Cawthorn.
My name is Emma, and I am eight years old. I think it is important to have a gym built in Swansboro, so that the church we have been using can have their building back, and so we can keep training with our wonderful coaches.
The next person who has signed up is Ms. Jenny Hylla. If you could come over here, please. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Hylla, and I am about to be sixteen. Growing up as a military child is never easy. Moving every two or three years to try and find a new place to fit in is never the definition of fun. Gymnastics has been one of the only consistent things in my life as I have moved from place to place. Gymnastics is my family. It's the place where I belong, and I can fit in without trying to be someone else. I spend more time with my coaches here than I get to with my own dad. Gymnastics is more than a sport. It has taught me courage, leadership, and confidence when nothing else seemed to be working. There are other gyms out there, but everyone should have the opportunity to find their own family, and I have found mine here. These people have believed in me, and so now I'm asking you to believe in us. This is my family, and my family needs a home, and I hope that we can find it in Swansboro. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, there are several names on here that have been stricken through, but I do want to call to make sure that that was intentional. The first is Annie Scott.
That was intentional, I thought we were just signing in.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, thank you. All right. Jesse Holland?
Same.
Okay. Hattie?
It's same.
Okay, thank you. All right. And last one, Stephanie Noracki? All right, thank you. Okay, the next person then is Anna Claire Wiggins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Claire, and I am a Level Seven gymnast at Unity Athletics. I'm here to tell you two things tonight. First, a little about Unity Athletics and why we are here, and secondly, why we want to purchase this piece of property for our new gymnastics facility and the positive effects that we can have on this community. Unity Athletics is in existence because a group of coaches stood together against all odds and much adversity. They truly loved the kids they were coaching, and knew, when they were forced to leave, that we would lose everything that we had spent almost two years working on. When we met Coach Chris, he promised us that we would be better if he did what, if we did what he instructed, and he would recruit others to help him with this task. He did both of these things. When this transition was occurring, we were two weeks away from meet season. When dedicated people stick together, amazing things can happen. We finished the season with incredible accomplishments. Many of us had our personal bests, and a couple of first-place team awards were given. He and his staff kept their promise, and we had the best season yet. The parents and gymnasts believe in, believed in these coaches, so we stood behind them, and Unity Athletics was created. It is an unforgettable journey for me, and with this group of leadership, we will continue to rise. We are currently practicing at the White Oak Church of God, and they have been amazing stewards of the Christian faith. The gymnasts, parents, and coaches will forever be grateful for what they have done and are continuing to do. However, Unity Athletics needs its own freestanding gym home. As we have gone to many meets over the last ten years, you realize that the facilities are off the beaten path of the city. The facilities are always nice, but in modest areas of town. Other startup gyms, just like ours, have limited resources to build and buy land. If we are given the privilege of putting our gym here, the community of Swansboro and Unity Athletics will benefit. We are involved and engaged in our gym events. We represent Unity at various civic functions. We participate in fundraisers, church functions, or whatever the need is. We are super excited to get involved more and more. We want to step out and grow our team, our gym, family, and our facility, and the way we do that is by being a positive example to others. Gymnasts are overachievers by nature and have to be, due to the time limitations that we deal with. We balance gym, school, family, church, and much more. We are a good group of kids with high expectations from ourselves and our community. We are proud of ourselves, who we are, and where we are going, and you will see that when you walk into Unity. We have families that work tirelessly to keep it all engaged for us. They help out with community functions, our boards in the community, law enforcement in our community, educators, healthcare providers, and on and on. Our parents are dedicated leaders and positive role models. The faculty, parents, and the gymnasts at Unity will benefit the community with integrity and a value system that will foster greatness. We will rise, we are Unity Athletics.
That is the last person who has signed up. I will make one call to the audience. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the public hearing, and the item is available for commissioner discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's a second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I have, yes, me too.
Go first.
Okay, first of all, Ava and Emma, you got us at hello, so. Secondly, you parents out there, really sneaky, but no, this is, that was fun. I was impressed when the kids walked in, because you recited the Pledge of Allegiance for one, and that made me proud. I think gymnastics is great. I think what you guys are doing is fantastic, and the fact you brought your whole team here, your group, and not only are they, you know, standing up for what they believe in, but they're also participating in the process, which is even a bigger step. The last person who spoke, did you write that yourself? We have an election in two years. Are you old enough? I think it's wonderful, and I guess you guys are, you know, I applaud you for your effort. I think it's just fantastic what you're doing, and absolutely, I don't think any of us here on this board, we're going to say no, because we think it's worthwhile, and it's good to see kids involved in sports. I grew up with sports, and sports definitely teaches you valuable lessons in life, and it does encourage you and inspires you and gives you more strength in terms of, you know, facing life and real issues, so congratulations, ladies, and parents, you won.
What I wanted to add to that is I come from a family of gymnastics, not me, I couldn't do any of that stuff, but my daughter and my son-in-law were gymnasts, and both of them were cheerleaders at North Carolina State, and both of them were the captains of the cheerleading squads, and they did a lot of coaching when they went up to Virginia, and now he's a commander in the United States Coast Guard. But I have watched, and my grandchildren now are into gymnastics, so my support was very easy. Thank you.
Yes, I do, I appreciate you guys being here. You did a great job, I appreciate your participation. I did have a question for Ben, just for clarification, if you don't mind. Am I correct, that the conditions of the rezoning stay with the property regardless of ownership or use?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
You think further?
We got a motion.
Not, uh.
Got a motion.
Not like John stacking a deck.
Yeah, well played.
We, we normally have a turnout with young people like this when the school board approaches for funding, so it's good to see some folks that's got a idea of what they want to do and which direction they want to go, and I appreciate you all coming. So with that being said, I'm calling for the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you kids, if you kids want to, leaving, I know it's a school night, but if you want to leave, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you're welcome to do that too.
Okay, they're leaving, we got to re-vote.
We'll give them a minute to, to get out. Give it to her. Give it to the clerk over there.
I think we have to re-vote.
Recall, recall, recall. Okay, we'll move on with. We'll move on with item six. Chris White.
That's a tough act to follow. The North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation, has awarded Onslow County a $2.4 million grant to be used toward the construction of an air traffic control tower at OHA. This grant, combined with the previously awarded $2 million FAA grant and pasture facility charges in the amount of $1,393,200, will fund the project. There is also a project ordinance amendment that will balance the project, does not change the overall cost of the project, and will adjust the expenses for the entire project. The construction of the tower is expected to be completed in late 2018, and the project is on schedule and on budget. Staff, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners accept the grant, approve the amended project ordinance, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
I'm going to make a motion to respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to accept the grant, approve the amended project ordinance, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
I'm the second in that.
No, they already did.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just repeated myself.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think it's two parts.
Is it two parts?
Six and six A, yes, it is two parts. Correct, Marty? It's not, it's all one?
Okay, thank you.
It said six A, I saw, asked.
Okay. We got both of them, so. Ben Warren on the contract for joint land use study.
All right, sir.
Jay Luke.
As you recall, last year, Onslow County was recipient of the Office of Economic Adjustment Joint Land Use Study Grant. That grant was in the amount of $261,850. Recently, we went through the RFP process, we had three consultants that submitted RFPs. We set up the Cooperative Planning Group's Steering Committee to evaluate the consultants, and based upon the staffing availability, the expertise, and the experience, Stantec Consulting was the firm of choice. We have for your consideration this evening, the contract for Stantec Consulting. Their contract amount would be in the amount of $254,000, and so this evening, we ask for you to consider approval of the contract for Stantec, excuse me, Stantec Consult, can't talk tonight, Stantec Consulting Services, and also authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of Onslow County, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir. This next one is a change in trustees of local firefighter relief fund. Is that Mr. Bryson's or?
It's me.
Okay, David?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The trustees of the local firefighter relief fund, governed by General Statute 58, TAC 84, TAC 30, was established to financially aid, or correction, assist paid and volunteer firefighters that have been injured or killed while performing fire department duties. Funding for these benefits are provided by a percentage of the tax on insurance premiums collected within the fire district pursuant to General Statute 105, TAC 228.5. These funds can also be used to pay for the North Carolina State Firefighters Association memberships, the North Carolina Fire and Rescue Pension Fund, firefighter physicals, scholarships, and other firefighter support programs. So to oversee these benefits, each fire department must establish a firefighter relief fund board, and the board consists of five members, two elected by the fire department, two elected by the city or county governing body, and one shall be appointed by the insurance commissioner. The Onslow County Fire Rescue Department Bear Creek Station requests that the commissioners consider the following personnel for the following categories on the North Carolina Firefighter Relief Fund Board. Ms. Lindsey Vane, governing body appointee, term expires at, at the board's discretion. Mr. William A. Stanley Jr., governing body appointee, again, term expires at the Board of Commissioners discretion. The applications are on file, have been certified by the clerk's office. Mr. Norman Bryson, emergency services director, will be available to answer any questions you may have. It is respectfully requested that the commissioners consider the appointments of Ms. Lindsey Vane and Mr. William A. Stanley Jr. to the Onslow County Fire Rescue Department Firefighter Relief Fund Board.
Motion.
So move?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
A question, why do we have open-ended terms?
That's, that's per the statute.
Is it? Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. There's nothing moved to the consent agenda. We're now to item nine, which is end of the meeting, a public comment for five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, no one has signed up for the second public comment period.
Okay, we will move on to item 10, a manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I do have one, one comment. I want to announce the inaugural Onslow County Citizen Academy that has come to fruition through the direction of the commissioners, to be more open, more transparent. That was one of the initiatives we took on as a staff. So just a few, few bullet points. Will, Onslow County Government will be hosting its first-ever Citizens Academy. The academy will take place each Wednesday, beginning April 25th, running through May 23rd, and it will be from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And the purpose of the academy is to allow residents of Onslow County to get a behind-the-scenes look at how county government operates, how we work. It will be interactive, and it's a free public information program essentially, and it's open to anyone who is, who is interested. There is no age limitation, and all participants interested in participating in our Citizen Academy would encourage them to visit the Onslow County website and fill out an application and return it by April 18th, just so we can get everything turned around and announcements of when and where to be. And each, each Wednesday will be, depending on the size of the department, it will be a collection of departments, or if it's one of our larger departments, we may spend the majority of that two and a half hours just talking about that, the specific services that we offer, but it's really to give folks a more in-depth understanding of what it is that we do, the services, the reason that we exist, why we're here. That is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Mr. Bennett.
Sure, thank you. I was privileged to be able to attend the Mars- I was privileged to be able to attend the Marsoc Community Day at Stone Bay on March the 27th. It was a very informative day. It's amazing what the Marine Corps has done down there, all the building and everything. That's the first chance I've had to go down there, so I was excited to be able to go and see what they've done for our Marsoc. Now, they're, they're, they're a bunch of great warriors, and I think they're doing a lot to keep our country safe. We appreciate what they do. Also, want to mention that today was the candidate forum for House District 14, the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners that is adding two seats this year. I would encourage everyone who didn't get to see it to go to G10 and, and get a chance to watch and see the candidates and be informed about the election that's coming up soon. Early voting starts April the 19th, and the election day is May the 8th. So I'd encourage everybody to be informed about who's running and vote your conscience. And lastly, Salvation Army had a grand opening at our new building on March the 21st. We have a great, great building there at the corner of White Street and Belfort. Salvation Army in February helped 1,137 local people here in Onslow County with food, and 174 of those were military or dependents. So your local Salvation Army is helping people every day with food, clothing, and household goods, so we appreciate your support for Salvation Army. Hope everybody has a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Congratulations to the, and thank you to the telecommunicators for the work they do for Onslow County and our citizens, and we're glad they could join us this evening. Our mental health task force did meet a week and a half ago, I think it was, and we finalized the wording on the RFP, so that's going out, and we're continuing to make progress there. The start date may be delayed a bit, I was informed, maybe to October or November for actually setting up and, and operationally, you know, running the facility, but, you know, we're still on track, trying to, trying to accelerate that as, as fast as we can. And to tag off what Commissioner Bennett said, I would remind those of you who are not registered to vote that April the 13th is the last day to register to vote. Get your voice to be heard on May 8th primary. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Buchanan.
I want to thank the telecommunicators for what they do for us, and thank the young people that were here tonight. It's amazing when they come in front of us. It brings a lot of memories back to some of us that had raised children, now we're raising grandchildren. Especially for me, I have eight grandchildren, so it's, keeps me pretty busy with my family, but it's rewarding when you can see the young people come in front of us, and it's just so much. And DSS and, and all that group that works so hard for us and what you do for the community, I'm just so proud of you. Thank you for being here.
Question, one.
Again, the telecommunicators, I can't say enough about them and the work they do. They're the first ones that you reach out to, and a lot of times, we take them for granted, but those individuals are there, and they're calm, and they talk through situations, and I'm very proud of all of them there, because I know they work hard. As far as Child Abuse Awareness Month, last three years of my career, I spent working sexual violence, in the sexual violence unit, and it involved child abuse as well, and, you know, this is very important to me. No child should be harmed in any way, shape, or form, and we need to take this seriously and get that awareness out there. And if we suspect something, we need to report it. Whether you think it's true or not, it doesn't matter, report it. So it's investigated properly, because the welfare of our children, like Mr. Buchanan said earlier, it's something near and dear to my heart, that we need to protect our children in every capacity that we can. I mean, that is our responsibility. To echo what Commissioner Price said, as far as our task force is concerned, again, I'm going to clang the bell for it, because I can't thank Sherry and David enough for the hard work that they're putting into it, especially Sherry. She has kind of taken the bull by the horns and is moving forward. We may be a little delayed in terms of the operational activity, as when we basically turned key to start our facility, but there are things in place right now that's, that's going to ensure that we get everything done this year with the RFP and with certain goals that they're, they're to, to attain, so that we can get everything in place and start the process and start treatment for some of our people. And this is a big step for us. It's something that we have not lost focus on, and I can't thank the staff enough for all the hard work. And for everybody out there, here in G10 world, again, voting season's here. I echo Commissioner Price and Commissioner Bennett's comments about study, listen, and participate, and if you haven't registered to vote, do so. Your vote does count. You know, get involved, study the candidates, whether it's from the BOE or whatever it might be. Study the candidates and make a wise decision as who do you want in those positions. Yeah, I'm looking forward to the election. It's going to be interesting, so. And I hope everybody has a great evening, and thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. I think we broke a record tonight. In my, all of my career of being a county commissioner, I think we had the youngest public speaker that ever spoke at a Commissioner meeting. So I congratulate them. Race, silence, thank your telecommunicators. Telecommunicators are the backbone of an organization. Without communications, can't do anything. And with 203,000 calls last year, that's a little over one call for every citizen in Onslow County. We have right at 200,000, so do the math. That's a lot of calls coming in that they have to answer, and a lot of work that has to be done, and what a very important organization, having telecommunicators on the other end when somebody calls. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Jack got it.
Got it.